You get something out of it. You do get something.
I will offer me to you to get something.
And here, yes, that is a good thing. But we will still. And since I don't think I have a book on the carat, but I'm going to go to Manchester, because I'm not moving. So I'm going to make it, and then I will stay there. When I go to the university, I will be there. I will go to China, and I will go to China. Because I close to start with. And I will go to China. And I will get a book on the carat. It's a malady, which is difficult to cure. That will be the reason. And now I have a passion, and I want to develop in the research and literature. And I will get what I have to say. And I will make a commitment to help others who are troubled. But I love to see people get better, and I will do it. The members of the board, and I will help them, and I will help them to do it. All of our guests, including the members of the board of the research and literature. I will help you to do what I have to do. But I will do what I have to do. See, we have a lot of things to do. And I will tell you.
And I will let you. So we are going to have a ball. I don't think so. As well as. Oh, I'm going to say. Do you want to show us? See, we can have a talk. And I, I know. I know. In the land, I can do. If you mean, I will have a conversation with you, and I will talk to you. Then I will come to the church, and I will talk to you. I will say, but I will say that. But I will say that. And I will say. Oh, yeah. And I will say that. Get you go. I will go back. And I will try. And I will get you there. So that we can. So they said, oh, I don't know, but I will do. So they said, but I will do. Oh, I will do. I will do. So that I will do. So I will do. So that I will do. I will do. I will do. I will do. So I will do. And I will let you go. That way, I will do. I will do. I will do. And I will say, why, why you can't have me? Let me go, and I will have a conversation with you. I will say, I will do. I will do. I will do. But I will say that. I will say that. And I will let you. And I will say, I can do. Carat, which I want. I want to do. I want to do. I want to do. I want to do. But I will say, I can do. Carat, which I want. And I will let you do. But I can do. I will do. I will do. And I will say. Oh, I will do. And I will do. And I will let you. I will try. But I will try. But I will try. And I will do. 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 But I will let you. I will try. But I will try. Oh, I will do. I will do. I will do. So I will do. 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 Carat, which I want. I want to do. 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 But I will do. 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 But I will do. Carat, which I want. I want to do. I want to do. I want to do. I want to do. And I want to do. I want to do. I want to do. I want to do. I will do. I will do. I will speak to you, and I will do.
So this is your idea, so that is.
Oh. You will do. I want to do. But I will do. 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 I want to do. I want to do. I want to do.
And I will say. I will say. I will say. I will say. And I will do. And I will do. And I will do. And I will do. I will do. I will do. I will do. And. I will do. I will do. I will do. I will do. And I will do. God. Thank you. And I will do. 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 And I will do. I will do. I will do. And I will do. 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 And. I will do. I will do. I will do. I will do. And I will do. And I will do. I will do. I will do. And I will do. 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 Always I will do. I will do. And I will do. And I will do. And I will do. And I will do. I will do. And I will do. And I will do. I will do. I will do. And I will do. This is so is that. Thank you for attending. But I should today. And I will do this thing. And I will do. Okay, right at the back, in this guy. We would also like to acknowledge in Sanke, who was. Because he was a municipality. It was like, hey, let's have him. Because he was a better. And we must say. I will do. And Mr. Swodow. The founder. And he did a very good thing. And from Sanke, I can. I can do. And I will help in our business, because I am manager. I will do locally. I don't know, I have a book. It's a teenager. It's the Dava. From Mama Chuba. It's the Radebe. And Tamreli. It's the Manguzdo. And so. And Sessiba. Ah, yes. And I will do. To show you. Everyone. And I will do. And I can find. And I will do. I will do. I will do. I will do. The member of this. Yes, to him, to him. And I. Dava. I will do. I will do. I will do. I will do. And I will do. Everybody. That's what I do. The sign of my. We know some of the books in Africa, and I will do. That's bad. So I. So I will do. Oh, okay. What wrong? And. And let's say, of speech. We have a child. We have not had approaches from the rest of the world. And we will be able to get in our mind. And meaning. And English, but it's our time, and we will. And I will do. And I will do. And. We are here today. Which is which I want to give a talk. And to all of them. The. The Shandehi. So, maybe I'll see you at the factory. I think I. I'm happy to. I will do. I will do. And the leper, I think, I will do. I will do. It's the best, the Shandehi. And we will say. I will do. We will send it. And we will add. And towards the end. The deal was presented to the portfolio committee. Of the agriculture and water block. As we were talking. Eight of the children. Thirty-two. For us. As visited, we take it. By the participation. To conduct, widely. And good, and good, and always be affected. By the limitation of. We have obtained our contribution. And we have the world that. The living. To me, it's a boat. And it's a last week. And that's the end. The in Oogun district. And Oogun cluster, she will. As the. Cancelled. The. And out. They understand that when you convince. The public hearing. Mostly, practically. And really. Where we present this. Bill to them. For their consideration. Today, we are here. Mama Chuba. This area, we have invited the world of our. My lover. To be in a district. And area of Mama Chuna district. Because that is two areas. They want to start with. And has to have just question. Process that we have embarked on. With the completed. And it's. So. And. One can come to one another. But one another, who is in the comments, what they say. I mean, the watching. I will say, all of it. So. Or one is still. Which we like. It contains way with the host which of comments. Will be okay on the screen towards the end of the presentation. The. I will do. And I will do. Which is so. True love. About the. About the. Parat, or the other. It had to see. The premiere and the end. And. The three premiere, the head of. Resolution titles. And national titles at. All who will. And I will do. No. I will do. I will do. And. He is. Few things. They said. And forty more. They gave us support. And let. But when it's over, you will do. It is about more, they are writing. From the. Apparently. And over, I see. And I. And it's the name of the land, just like I. And mostly, it is. And I will do. Then let's. And I will say, yeah, we will do. As sure as I have. She does not. I will do. Last thing. And I will do. You know, we are a servant. But we listen to them, and they are so. But this is the corner of what. Practical. Is all the. And they have a good answer. And. It's still very interesting. And I will do. But for me. It's very hard to get that. So I will do. I will do. I will do. And they are like. Oh, I will do. I will do. And I will do. I will do. Oh, I will do. And I will do. I will do. I will do. And I will do. So. And. And. I will do. Well, I will do. To banage. Yes, and. And that way. And group. I will be here now. And I will do. I will do. And I will do. And I will do. And I will do. This thing, I have to do. What you want. To you. Then in that time. I will have to pass. We also have. In. The office of. This registrar. I will do. So how do that? And see, what's the intention? Everything. He made a cloud. But I didn't find a map, but I will do. Because I will do. But we can. I. In. Oh, yeah. But I will do. And. You are trying to come and trade the presentation. In such an. After that presentation. And. It means. I have to see. By suspicion. And the which. As a. Actually. Is a.
...of sectional plans. Section twelve deals with registration of sectional plans and opening of sectional title registers. It provides that when the requirements of this act and any other relevant law have been complied with, the registrar shall register a sectional plan, open a sectional title register in respect of the land and buildings thereon, issue to the developer a prescribed form of certificate of registered sectional titles in respect of each section and its undivided share in the common property, subject to any mortgage bond registered against the title deed. It continues to provide that if the registrar ordered issue to the developer certificates of real rights in respect of any preservation made in terms of section two in section one, subject to any mortgage bond registered against the title deed. And it further provides that the registrar will issue to the developer a certificate of real rights in respect of the right of exclusive use as contemplated in section two, service of section one, subject to any mortgage bond registered against the title deeds of the. Then moving on to section fourteen that deals with amendment and cancellation of sectional plans. This section provides that the surveyor general may require a land surveyor or architect who has prepared the registered sectional plan to alter or amend any registered sectional plan found to be incorrect or try to treat another sectional plan for the incorrect sectional plan. The section fifteen deals with preparation of documents by conveyancer. This section provides that, subject to the provisions of this act or any other law, the registrar is, shall not, attest, execute or register any deal transfer sectional mortgage bond certificate of title or certificate portion of any land or property unless it has been raised has been prepared by the owner. Then section sixteen that deals with ownership of common property provides as follows. The common property are owned by owners of sections jointly in undivided shares proportioned to the quarters of their respective sections as specified on the relevant sectional plan. It also provides that a sectional title deed in respect of a section shall, in separate paragraph, describe the undivided share in the common property of the owner of the section as an undivided share in the common property apportioned to the section in accordance with the quarter of the section. Then section seventeen that deals with elimination and letting of common property. This section provides that the owner and holders of the right of extension contemplated in section twenty five may, upon unanimous resolution, direct the body corporate on their behalf to eliminate common property or to let common property under this and therefore the body corporate shall have power to deal with such common property in accordance with the legislation. Then section eighteen that deals with substantial twelve mortgage bonds undivided share, common property or land and section of these or real rights. This section provides that in terms of the provisions of section sixteen of the deeds registry Act, it applies when necessary changes to the transfer of any mortgage bond. The section of any mortgage bonds of a unit, the section of any mortgage real rights in or over a unit, the section of any mortgage real rights under sections twenty five and twenty seven and the transfer under section seventeen of any mortgage common property. The effect of this guarantees that upon transfer of units etc. any bonds that are registered over such units etc. may be disposed of. Then section twenty one that deals with approval of plan of subdivision or consolidation by surveyor general. Here, if an owner of the section proposes to subdivide into a section or to consider a two of sections registered in need of he or she shall order the surveyor or architect to submit a draft sectional plan of subdivision of consolidation in need to surveyor general. It talks to registration of subdivision of sections. In this section, any owner may, after approval of a section, open of a sectional plan of subdivision of a section, apply to the registrar of deeds of the deeds registry in which the section gives register to register the sectional plan of subdivision. An application shall be accompanied by two points of the sectional plan of subdivision. The sectional title deed of the section to subdivide sectional mortgage bond registered over the section consent of the mortgagee to the cancellation of these substitutions of new sections in lieu of such sections as security under the bond, certificates of registered sectional titles for each of the new sections and their undivided shares in the common property. Then moving on to section twenty three that deals with registration of consolidation of sections. Here, the owner may, after approval of the sectional plan of consolidation of three or more sections, apply to the registrar of deeds registry in which the sections are registered, going to register the sectional plan of consolidation. Then section twenty four talks to the extension of sections. Here, if an owner of the section proposes to extend the fund of this section, he or she shall force a land surveyor or architect to submit a draft sectional plan of the extension to the surveyor general for his approval. Then a developer may, in section twenty five dealing with extension of schemes by addition of sections and exclusive use areas. Here, a developer may use the application for the registration of the sectional plan, preserve the right to erect, complete or improve from time to time but within a period of delay at all. An extended period is mainly agreed upon according to the provisions of the act. Number one, the building of buildings being for a lifetime extension of an existing building or see a vital extension of an existing building on a specified part of a common property. Then section twenty six talks to the extension of schemes by addition of land to common property. In this section, land purchased by the body corporate are deemed to be owned by all of the owners of sections in the same proportion as the application. The draft plan is sent or then surveyor and submitted to the surveyor general for approval. The registrar of deeds must inform the submission of the prescribed documents, register a plan of extension of the common property by making an announcement on the relevant title deed to reflect that the land has been incorporated in sectional plan. Then in section seven that deals with rights of exclusive use of parts of the common property. This section provides that every part of the common property is delineated or spared on a sectional plan or a specific purpose. And developer must make the stage of making an application for the opening of sectional title register in code of commission in terms of section eleven of this act whereby a right to the exclusive use of such part of the common property is conferred upon the owner or owners of one or more of those sections. Then section thirty four that deals with shares of developers and buildings and land. This section provides that the developer is the owner of any section or sections in respect of which the ownership is not held by any others. The total of the quarters of such sections or sections shall determine the share of the developer in the common property. Then one, the ownership in every section is held by any person other than then the developer. The developer will then cease to have a share of interest in the common property. Then moving on to section forty nine that deals with disposal or destruction of buildings. This section provides that when building of buildings in a review saying, the body corporate must lodge with the registrar of deeds a notification of such destruction and a copy of the resolution of the owners, this is governed by act number eight, twenty eleven, that is administered by human servants. Then upon receipt of such notification, the registrar of deeds must make an entry thereon in the relevant sectional title register. And when such entry has been made, owners cease to be separate owners of sections but remain for owners of the land in undivided shares. Secondly, the sectional mortgage bonds, these deeds or other real rights that are registered over a limit will be deemed to be converted into a mortgage bond, these or other real rights registered against the undivided share in the land which formed part of such ones and see the land or debt repaid to the landowner. Then lastly, section fifty four that deals with the sectional titles regulation board. This section provides for the establishment of the sectional titles regulation board which shall make recommendations to the minister concerning any matters specified in section fifty five in regard to which the minister may make regulations. The board will also keep the working and implementation of this act and the regulations under particular rules and make recommendations to the minister in regard to any amendments which may be advisable. And as such, that is why while having this table before us today, this was a true recommendation that are made by the board as well as and inputs the key to this. The current membership of the board, the current membership is that the board consists of the chief registrar of deeds, which is the chairperson of the board, and it has the chief surveyor general. Then the members that are appointed by the minister are the conveyancer who is nominated by the legal professionals council, the professional land surveyor that is nominated by the relevant council, the architect that is nominated by the relevant council, the officer of business, the Benin Association South Africa, the two persons that have the special knowledge of sectional title development schemes and an official of the Department of African Culture and Land Reform Development. Therefore, every member, there is an alternate member who is appointed in the same manner as the others that are appointed in the board. Then as I had slightly touched on, the sectional titles in the management act, this active interlink with the sectional titles act by the way, the main deals with issues around the body corporate and how they regulate the sections in common property and it also deals with and by the trust these in the body corporate and the management of sections. And this act also provides for the appointment of the chief onboard and as such, another piece of legislation which is the Community Skills Onboard Service Act, number nine, twenty eleven, was passed in order to establish the office of the onboard, which we have the community scheme onboard service. The CSOS provides a point dispute resolution mechanism in respect of the act and it also takes custody of and provides public access to sectional titles and stipulations as they may be determined by the minister from time to time. It also provides for education, information, documentation and services and to assist the owners to become aware of their rights and obligations in such last time and other community scheme. As I mentioned, the three pieces of legislation which is sectional titles act of nineteen eighty six, the sectional titles schemes management act of twenty eleven as well as the current schemes onboard service act of twenty eleven as well are all interlinked, but the last two are actually administered by the Department of Human Servants, but the sectional titles act of nineteen eighty six is administered by the Department of African Culture and Land Reform Development. So basically, that is the first part of the presentation that deals with the act as it currently stands. And the bill that is before us today seeks to now amend the act as it stands and enhance the act in order for it to be easily implemented. So by way of introduction, thanks, Mike. As I mentioned, this the sectional titles regulations board is established in terms of section fifty four of the sectional titles act, number ninety five, nineteen eighty six. The board has the responsibility to keep the application and implementation of the act under the good idea and make recommendations to the minister regarding the amendments to the act. So the board has recommended that certain amendments be invented to the act of which I believe all of us have a copy of. In the main, the object of the bill as it stands, it deals to amend the sectional titles act of nineteen eighty six for the objective of improvement and enhancing the application and implementation of this act. Then, when we move to clause one, which deals with definitions, there is an amendment to the definition of exclusive use areas. The clause has been amended now to refer to exclusive use by it refers to the exclusive use by only the owner of the section currently under the twenty six act. The clause has now been amended to also introduce people that are using the exclusive use area that will be used since of the family members of the owner. So as it stands now, the definition can be interpreted to exclude any other person other than the owner, hence the inserted amendment to the definition. The second definition is that of sectional titles schemes management act. In the current act, it was invariably referred to as being the act of twenty ten instead of the twenty eleven act. Now, the proposed amendments in clause of one A and B seek to correct the position and as I did mention that administered by the human servants department. So it's just a question of doing that correction of the year twenty ten into twenty eleven, which is young, self cosmetic but important and amendments. Then moving on to clause four, clause two, sorry, clause two, six two, amend section four that deals with the approval of development schemes and it provides for the developers to have meetings with L C S where part of the building is to be wholly or partially let for residential purposes. There's a need to provide for L C S representatives to act on behalf of such a scheme in instances where L C S absent from such a meeting. Therefore, clause two provides for this in session. Then clause three, six two, amend section fourteen of the act which deals with the amendment and cancellation of sectional plans. However, it only provides for dealings with sections that are affected by incorrect sectional plans and not for the exclusive use areas. Then section fourteen, subsection A, provides for cancellation upon application by a developer of a sectional plan by court or by court order. And section fourteen must clarify the provisions to follow where a body corporate exists and the court makes an order to the cancellation of their sectional plan. So that clause, clause three, provides for this. Then moving on to clause five, which seeks to amend section seventeen, subsection four, capital B. Currently, the section provides for elimination of a portion of common property on which an exclusive use area or part thereof is registered. However, registration of transfer of common property can only be effected after cancellation of the exclusive use area that is situated on the common property that is to be transferred. The act does not provide for dealings with part of the exclusive use areas and section seventeen must be amended to provide clarity in this regard. Therefore, clause five of the bill aims to rectify this position. Then clause seven, six two, amend section twenty one in the act. Currently, section twenty one deals with the approval of plans of subdivision or consolidation by the surveyor general. However, section twenty one does not provide for a developer prior to the establishment of the body corporate to cause a land surveyor to submit a draft sectional plan of subdivision or consolidation to a surveyor general for approval. Therefore, clause seven in the bill, eight to rectify this. Then moving on to clauses eight, nine, ten and twelve. In section twenty two currently, which deals with the registration of subdivisions of sections, it does not, this section does not provide for developers prior to establishment of body corporates to apply for registration of sectional plans of subdivisions of sections. Now, the insertion of sections twenty two, one, capital eight and twenty two, subsection two, E, capital eight, in clause as eight A and eight M, they aim to provide for this in session. Therefore, clauses nine A and C, clause ten A and C and twelve are deemed similar proposals in respect of the consolidation and extension of sections. And the section also provides for endorsement of deeds that have been registered against several deeds of sections in order to reflect subdivisions of such sections. However, subsections, section twenty two, subsection two, that provides for lodgment of the relevant type deeds or means reference to these. The insertion of section twenty two, subsection two, C, capital A, as contained in clause eight, sub clause B of the bill aims to rectify this position. Therefore, the clauses nine B and ten B contain similar proposals for amendments of sections twenty three to twenty four. Then moving on to clause eleven. This clause six two, amend section twenty five, which currently deals with extensions of the scheme. Section twenty five, subsection two, provides for filing in a deeds registry of the plan to scheme showing the part of the common property affected by the reservation and the manner in which buildings are to be subdivided into sections and exclusive use areas. Now, section twenty five does not provide for placement of documentation to be filed in instances where such documentation has been lost or destroyed. The proposal in clause eleven A of the bill provides for this. Then lastly, clause fifteen, that six two, amend section fifty four, provides for the establishment of the sectional titles regulation board. The amendment of this section provides for gender representativity and the appointment of the registrar and another conveyancer with practical knowledge on matters pertaining to the registration of sectional title units and the opening of sectional title registers. At the end of my presentation, if you can project the slides where the, yes, that slide that shows where the submissions can be submitted. Just a bit on this, thank you. Thank you. The team of the fire to that education. The the being been from the National Council of Province. Australia, the the one of the people. The person choice. So Shaminach Ansting. Hello, Raj. Okay. Okay, the final point to my former as the others beg her to is now as to We're going to. So, I'm going to. I'm going to. This is the. I'm going to. I'm going to. I'm going to. I'm going to. This is what I'm going to. I'm going to. I'm going to. This is what I'm going to. I'm going to. I'm going to. Focus in. So, I'm going to. You know, the. Now, eh, I'm going to. I'm going to. Why? But it's. I'm going to. This is what I can. Now, I'm going to. I'm going to. So, I'm going to. But I. So, I'm going to. Okay, I'm going to. So, I'm going to. I'm going to. I'm going to. I'm going to. This is. I'm going to. So, I'm going to. 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 Daa wa. This is. This is the. I'm going to. 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 This is. I'm going to. I'm going to. I'm going to. Together. I'm going to. I'm going to. I'm going to. So, I'm going to. It is not even now. So, I'm going to. 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 So, I'm going to. I'm going to. I'm going to. So, I'm going to. I'm going to. So, I'm going to. 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 Because it's. I'm going to. I'm going to. So, this is what I can. But this is. I, eh, it is. The other. I'm going to. I'm going to. Eh, I'm going to. This is. We are doing this. So, I'm going to. For the. For the. So, I'm going to. So, I'm going to. I'm going to. So, I'm going to. So, I'm going to. I'm going to. It's okay. But I'm going to. I'm going to. I'm going to. The other. I'm going to. I'm going to. I'm going to. This is. Eh, it's. I'm going to. And so, I'm going to. I'm going to. I'm going to. So, I'm going to. You know, I'm going to. 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 So, I'm going to. I'm going to. I'm going to. So, I'm going to. But I'm too many. I'm going to. Eh, yeah, I'm going to. It's actually. I'm going to. I'm going to. I'm going to. I want to. This is. That I'm. That's the discussion. That is. I'm going to. This one. But nearly. I'm going to. I'm going to. I'm going to. I'm going to. That is. We may. That actually. I'm going to. I'm going to. I'm going to. I'm going to. It's the. I'm going to. I'm going to. I'm going to. Like. Do you mind? This is the. Well, yeah, sure. I mean, maybe. Check for the. But this. But nearly. I'm going to. I'm going to. And then you go. I'm going to. Daa wa. Thank you. I'm going to. I'm going to. Over there. So, I. I did. Where? I'm going to. I'm going to. I'm going to. But I'm going to. But it's. I'm going to. This is. But nearly. So, I'm going to. I'm going to. It's a. The issue is. Twenty-five subsection one. I know one. I'm going to. And eh, I'm going to. So, it's. It's a. I'm going to. She. I'm going to. One. And then. So, I'm going to. I'm going to. It is. I don't know. I don't know. Eh, eh, I'm going to. I'm going to. I'm going to. And. Register. I don't know. Eh. I just. Maybe. I'm going to. I'm going to. It's so. I'm going to. I'm going to. Daa wa. It is. The. I'm going to. I'm going to. This is. But. I'm going to. I'm going to. But I'm going to. I'm going to. I'm going to. I'm going to. Daa wa. Then, here. But it is. As we share. Eh, as well. It is. This is. I'm going to. Share. With the. So, can you? You. We share that. You can. Pretty much. But today. It's. I'm going to. Oh, no. I'm going to. This is. I'm going to. Therefore. This is. So, I'm going to. 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 This. This is. This is. I want to. I'm going to. I'm going to. I'm going to. I'm going to. There we. I'm going to. Now, I'm going to. To. You should. I'm going to. I'm going to. Everybody. But. I'm going to. This is. It's about eighteen. Eh, it's. Where we need. Share. I'm going to. It will. Crashes. And then. This is. Seven. I'm going to. I'm going to. So, then. I'm going to. It's so. Actually, so. It's. I'm going to. It's. Eh, this. I'm going to. I'm going to. I'm going to. Thirty-eight and twenty-six. I'm going to. I'm going to. I'm going to. Eh, so. It's. I'm going to. I'm going to. So, I'm going to. I'm going to. I'm going to. I'm going to. Ah. This is. I'm going to. One. I'm going to. That is. Eh, I'm going to. I'm going to. So, I'm going to. I'm going to. Which is. I'm going to. So, I'm going to. I'm going to. Yeah. I'm going to. So, I'm going to. I'm going to. I'm going to. But I'm going to. I'm going to. I'm going to. Eh, I'm going to. I'm going to. I'm going to. So, which is. It's. This is. I'm going to. 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 You guys. When they. I'm going to. I'm going to. Yeah, this. I'm going to. I'm going to. I'm going to. It's. I'm going to. I'm going to. But eh, I'm going to. So, I'm going to. 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 So, I'm going to. I'm going to. I'm going to. I'm going to. Eh, but. I'm going to. I'm going to. I'm going to. I'm going to.[1152.68]
...
Eh, botamase kusewa yu kosi. Kwanayiti velo meklo ni awo swakta. Kisa waxewo yo ekosi. Kulo plias ba. Ome ome kisa bokuchi. Ome kona enzo so ekona. Se shumutikla me. Inpegele enzo so. Iwotwe eka kuryapa yo nelo. Eh, aban tuhama la apahedi aweni. La se maplasne iti. Eh, basle baspoone. Ya achosikapa kosi awo. Botwa. Ome kona la luku asna wa amanda. No man kaba wisembe iti ta. Asi maposi awo. Iga kulu gasi ulit invelofu. Eh, iskunbanai. Bokuchi. Itu wasipulile basoli iskunbuchi. Eh, eh, kaba kuchimu kumwadu stelo ma masabinda. Senfe etaka asin kumwachili. Eh, senparalame nde. Eh, uneswito. Iskut invelofu esin entare hinga wete. Savan isipeturwa banu. Frule fruti ukshonisho. Eh, uspeka ome keboguchi. Eh, iholo amsnikendio na ban. Eh, sensoleta iti velo. Iga kulu gasi yonakindo. Eh, inklavala ekuji paralame nde jobalila. Eh, niso wa bokuchi defune hingela ekuji. Kabe hipo nopeka wena ome kona neyeyi. Eh, deklavamuki. Iga kulu gasi basoli shon. Ilo ome kusitanga kulu kuchi. Eh, ome kusukunisakshilo kuchi. Unen daro. Eh, eh, chinagala ayosina umikas. No masi. Isina umikas botwa. Wunaga lektwa inflera. Itansala la blunda. Ome klasitua inflera la mateten. Okla me. Eh, umikas valionda. Ome kina kala la zara me. Eh, eh, eka meroke rotekbe me. Ome kaba kaba pekro iti sini wisere. Eh, bo.
President Director. Ome yutuba. Ingalelo skutavani iti majuba. Ome nadezita. Amakosa kona la. Kola samimfasela. Ii mune ekona. Napanya ukitestati. Ingalele nulkomi. Ituwa pasan hendo sagiti. Wasupana da igesmiti. All protocol to serve. Ika maboki. Omi osatindi we. Koni joa. Ato sheero. Jelbo kulbomta. Mtsambe isinengas ebekola iti. Botwa ingalelukumukufunda azere eyo ofa. Kabe nuzoku. Nzoku. Nzokuza jokuna ekuji. Jeloba tikomutangala. Kusaba. Ume mtsabu kubuwa anki. Kuntzolchi lo mtsabu kubuwa anki nesa ki. Kuntzolchi. Kabe la wava ikata kobi kaban gamen. Se mitatu mtsabu garamba ose ni malepe. Kuti mutetu. No utisholchi je. Omo ye omo omo. Kuni ekosi awo peleka. Sia zarela bokuji. Sia swakutunila. Menzbe nama ekosi. Ume iti ngayi. Kongo mungu. Mungu. District. Ma mungu. Senze zarela tege. Wa T S D. La otzolchi ukulbomta. Bambe sele na nesizwa.
Ba umba, umba umba mungu di, akugogo. Kuti nga shona nje, muto ogo ogo ye no be i ooga, e i sakhiwo. Be abangwe mungu ba tada, be se me sala se me banga, muthi kame. Umu i ogo nga delelele uku se yele. Oba abanyi, abaye banga cha chungu. Kame panele kensingui, apa na mukuma kese uku tu banusu, sa tu ku tu banusu.
Ka ogo kwa me ba umba mungu di. U, jongo ba umba tu borbanu da, badi nungu chi eh, umeda. Na pambi nungu, se ba baba, se ba baba. Eh, kia tabango uchi, kia kona, uchi inuka se. Jorobbe la kola se. Be, be, tu ma madongi she itu, abata ba bi shona nje, amata. Da ma madongi she awena, e inu chi, o nga party, we ngena cha. Eh, u, no, zinu, enzi wena, bamaspa. Cholo uchi eh, u no ndi, osu slahle, o de, tpiens, u no uku slo. Koto, uchi ebendetwiga, i kuda, o maspa. Be be tu ba nyaka nyakasis. Oba, abana ako, opa pega ayo, uchi eh, banda. A, angaz uchi be, kame, o nga, deke deke, kaka jaa. Ina, o den kulmanayos, ilapa na desu chinpaya, amsharobo.
Thank you with the chair saying. Good afternoon. And because of time, allow me to say all protocols of saying. Instead of breaking everyone's rule. Now, I'm going to speak in English. And my colleague will translate eh, responses in Isulu. So that everyone can be accommodated. I'm not going to respond to all the questions, but I'm only going to respond to those that are harder than the two of the interviews. The first question was the ownership eh, in this national territory scheme. Now, there is what is called a section. Now, a section will be your flat, in, in simple language. And there is what is called a unit. Now, a unit, it is your left and your right in the common property. That is why, when you buy a flat, a territory, you say, unit consisting of a section and participation in the common property. So, what you own, you own a unit and participation back using the name, using the, using the passages, and so on and so on. Now, every unit has one measurement. Now, that measurement is called a participation code. They take the measurement of your flat and measurement of other flat, and they include the divisions. And they will allocate a percentage of your unit. Maybe your unit will be ninety-eight eh, percent in the participation code. Now, while they allocate, it is important. When you have a meeting, as if you stay in there. Your vote weight is in line with your participation code. The person who is a bigger flat has got a bigger participation code. As a result, if a person has got a bigger, when it comes to voting, that person vote, it is heavier than other people's voting before of the measurement of the flat. Now, why people have a big event, there is what is called a meeting. Now, in the baby, the contents of the flat. There's a cleaning the garden, there's a cleaning the swimming pool, the contents of the green, cement of water, and so on and so on, it's called a meeting. Now, people, they take in line with the value of the participation code. If your participation code is bigger, and is a, the whole scheme must be ten thousand. You're going to pay bigger portion of ten thousand. Because your unit is bigger and you got a bigger participation code. I'm not sure if that, it is outside. It comes from the things that are being made every time.
But I think, I think from my side, that's the, 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 the. Only by the, but only, I think that the no one, only the, 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 the. I had a colleague with, that's how I feel. I think that's where, now, that's, that's correct for how the, at least, that's where.
Yeah, okay, I, I get your point about the developer. Remember, the developer is the owner of the land before they open the scheme. Now, after owning a scheme, they will transfer the units to the individual. Now, the developer has got the right to reserve, a right for further extensions of the scheme. Now, that right is reserved in terms of your section twenty-five. Now, 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 once you are the owner of a unit, you are the owner together with other people in the scheme. Also, if the developer is still part, then he has reserved the right. Or if a body corporate eh, a common law has got the right to extend. What I don't understand is the issue of reason. You're saying you're paying for the navy's end?
The rent for the den. Rent for the, whatever you do. Part of the net, eh, eh. Now, those are, yeah, yeah, it, yeah, let me, don't forget it, when I just talked offline, about the, 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 the event in part. Let me ask my colleagues, what they want, yeah, yeah.
I'm morning in front, I think, you know, what, tell us. Okay, don't probably eh, that's one of our special times, I'm thinking, I'm madly. As long as it's in true, that's it. No, that's special times. No, I wish that special times, I mean, when we live in America. It's the nature of the world, we're just not on the same thing. I have a friend, her brother, and they're in the road, in the Jacko, in the Fancie, in the Gattan. That's almost, that's a special times. Well, by, we all are strong, we're awesome. This is what I'm passing, since eh, eh, this is what I tell.